We are recording.
All right, we'll call to order this special meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624. Our clerk is not here, so I will just say that present on behalf of the board are Scott Wilson, Don Mullin, Kim Chapman, March Newmaster, Janet Newberg, and George Kimball. And tonight, we have a special presentation by Dr. Cook from the Cambrian Group. I think it's meant to be very interactive. We're going to learn a lot about and provide advice on the strategic planning process. Dr. Casper Check, would you like to provide an introduction?
Sure. So, Dr. Cook has been with us the last couple of days. We've been up in Hugo, at Hugo City Hall. We have a group of thirty of us who've been working with him. I don't know how he'll characterize how it's been going. I think pretty well. I don't know. We've made a lot of progress, and so he's here to make sure the School Board knows, understands what we're going through right now in the strategic planning process, and then to also provide you all an opportunity to ask questions about the process and where this is heading. So, really is, I don't know what you have planned, Dr. Cook, but I think less formal and more of an interaction than a presentation. So although Ange does have you set up for what you need, I think.
Do you think the recorder is close enough to Dr. Cook? He'll probably be the primary speaker. We want to make sure we pick up what he is saying.
Yeah, I don't know how sensitive this thing is.
It's been pretty sensitive in the work-study meetings, so...
Do you think this will be... Well, here's what we can do. Here's what we can do. No, we'll just do this. I've got a long score here. Do this.
That's excellent.
If you hear things like that, you may speak to him now.
All right. Well, welcome, Dr. Cook. It's a pleasure to have you here tonight.
Thank you. Your assumption is very optimistic that what I have to say might be worthwhile. Well, thank you very much for letting us have this discussion this evening, and I especially thank you for allowing us to continue to work with your district. You know, your current plan was facilitated by one of my associates, John Messault, and I think that was about five years ago. John is actually from Minnesota. He was superintendent down at Kimball, and then he came up to Minneapolis and worked with C M E R D C and provided all kind of help and assistance in developing their technologies. As a matter of fact, C M E R D C today provides our software that undergirds our strategic planning. They've actually tailored a software package strictly for our process discipline to enable you to implement this plan through the schools and through the classroom. It's a wonderful solution, and it probably has more capacity than any of us will ever use. And I didn't mean to talk about that, but if you'd like to see a demonstration of that, we can, he can demonstrate it to you in about thirty minutes, taking over your computer, showing you how you can use this to actually make sure your plan is facilitated and taken into action. But back to the business at hand and what we're doing here by way of strategic planning. Before I presume to offer any comments about this, do any of you have questions that you'd like for me to deal with, either during my presentation or in advance?
It looks like everyone is waiting with bated breath.
Apparently so. I guess that's good. Actually, you want to do this?
No, thanks. Good right here.
I really don't know how much you want me to tell you about this. Somewhere in that briefcase, I've got a flash drive that has fifty-two hours on strategic planning, and that's a fact. So I'll really be brief. I really think what I'd like to do, if you please, is to give you some idea about the underlying assumptions and principles in strategic planning, the way we see it, the way we define it, the way we practice it, and then to walk you through step by step the strategic planning process that we have initiated here by invitation of your superintendent, who by the way is responsible for planning. Your superintendent actually has three approaches to planning, and I don't mean to be too technical. I do this strictly by way of clarifying and defining what we're trying to do. If you scour the world and examine all libraries that have to do with planning, you'll only find three possibilities. One of them generally is described as long-range planning. It's a little bit misleading because long range seems to imply that the emphasis is on duration. Well, all planning has long-range applications. But long-range planning is not just a matter of time, it's a matter of the assumption that undergirds long-range planning. I cannot take you to a single source or to a single authority on long-range planning, but this is what we know. All long-range planners operate on the same basic philosophy. They start at the same place, they utilize the same kind of process, they end at the same place, and it has the same sometimes results. But the important thing to understand about long-range planning is the assumption on which it's based. Ninety-five percent of all corporate planning is long-range planning, about ninety-five percent. And I know that because we did a lot of work and do a lot of work down in the corporate world. The assumption underlying long-range planning is this, that we are in fact an entity, an organization of some kind, and when we start to try to project ourselves into the future, the projection actually becomes a prediction. Long-range planners seem to believe that we still live in a Newtonian universe, where everything moves with clock-like precision and therefore predictability is of the essence. So they would begin their planning by putting together a group of people maybe, and they would engage in something called an environmental scan, whereby they would assess all the conditions and circumstances around them. They would consider those conditions causes and not conditions, assuming that we had to respond to them on their terms. Basically, what long-range planning does is take locus control outside the organization. It actually denies or destroys that organization's autonomy. The locus control goes outside, and so the only thing we could do in planning is to react and to respond to those external circumstances, those external forces. Hence, the strongest word they will use in their planning is adaptation. They will never talk about creating, designing and building, but they're rather adapting to the circumstances and conditions that they have inherited. As a matter of fact, probably the heart of their aspiration is to survive. They don't talk much about thriving, and they eventually wind up either engaging in serious competition by which they kill off all the other contenders, or they find some sort of market niche in which they can actually survive. It's extremely important we have this understanding at the outset here because you are in fact, by definition, an autonomous system. Autonomous, two words, self-governing, self-governing, that's what you are. You're the board, you're self-governing. By definition, the locus of control is inside the district. So we have the power and the prerogative when we look into the future not to predict and not to engage in a discussion of probabilities, but actually to talk about possibilities. When we look into the future, we don't try to discern what is going to be and how we should adjust to that, rather we try to see what we want to create for ourselves and in this case, for our students and community. What that means is at the outset, the assumption is that our plan is going to create a serious gap between where we would be if we continued to operate the way we are today and where we want to be at some point in the future. In fact, that is, you might suspect, called a strategic gap. And then we set about to close that gap with something we call strategies, that's why it's called strategic planning. I recently had a discussion with a board president up in Vermont. He's an attorney, pretty powerful guy. He just won a landmark case against a very large retailer, but he was a little bit timid about the prerogative of the board. And the conversation went like this, "Bill, we don't have a lot of control about what goes on in our school district." He said, "The State Department of Education writes our curriculum, instructional technology, instructional methodology, et cetera, et cetera. State gives us money from time to time, but we really don't have any control over this, ultimately." And I said, "Thumper?" By the way, I don't know why they call him Thumper. I've always been afraid to ask him, but he can iterate that. I said, "You're the attorney, you should be telling me this." I said, "There are two kinds of control. There's de facto and de jure." I said, "You got it, de jure, you got it by law." But the fact that you're not practicing it, I do not assume that. Then you have lost it, de facto. Change the way you thought. Embolden him and the rest of the board to really make a serious commitment to strategic thinking and to actually seeing the highest aspiration of that community and to create a future in their minds that most people would say is unrealistic. As a matter of fact, that's a first test of a good strategic plan, is when we take it to the general public, people say it's completely unrealistic. The reason they say that is because they're presupposing the existing system going forward. Well, strategic planning cannot do that because obviously, if you create a strategic system and you have a truly strategic plan, then the organization that developed that plan is not going to be able to take that plan into action. They're assuming the existing system is going to be charged with that magnificent responsibility, and we're not. Because one of the things that occurs in our process is at least the encouragement to develop the capacity to realize your own plan. Without that, people are going to say, "Well, you made a lot of promises you're not willing to keep, you do not intend to keep." Frustration, cynicism, all sorts of things that are not good would arise from that kind of circumstance. That'd be the first thing I'd want you to know, and by the way, this is why we always like to have a conversation with the board going in, because we realize this whole business of autonomy is an extremely important thing. Some people call it locus of control. I'm not going to get involved in the political dimensions of that, but it's very important that we see the locus of control inside us. So many organizations don't. I just invited another Army Corps of Engineers to come up and talk to them about strategic planning. We're getting to be back in uniform, and so I said to them, "Look, the first thing we need to settle is, are we going to assume that we're an autonomous system?" They said, "What does that mean?" I tried to explain it to them, and they said, "We're not sure we have any of that. Well, just give us a few days, let us work through this." I said, "Fine." That was about two years ago. I've not heard from them since. They're still trying to find that locus of control. It's a serious issue, it's a serious proposition, it's not just an academic sort of thing. I'll stop there and see if you have any questions or comments, additions or subtractions.
Yes, sir. We are, in this state, you know, ISD, Independent School District, so yes, by definition, we are autonomous from each other as well as, you know, the state itself as a control infrastructure.
Yes.
However, there are certainly, I would think that you would have to accept, certain conditions that will drive our decisions, that we can't control, chief among them, student population and population trends.
Absolutely.
So what is your response for planning for those sorts of attributes?
Well, as I said, we see those external circumstances, we would see those state regulations or anything else that has an effect on you as not being causes, but as circumstances and conditions. The difference is, I see them as causes, I will respond to them on their terms, I'll simply react with them. I'll go where I'm pushed. If I see them as conditions, then I would exercise some prerogative to find my way through them or above them to accomplish my highest aspiration. I would not let those things, how should I say, inhibit my intent, my plans, my design to create the best educational system I could for my community. It's the locus of control over the control. And you see, it's a serious issue. By the way, it's an interesting thing that you raised, Scott, a look. We really have confused this whole issue of autonomy nationwide. In fact, it may be the most confusing issue facing public education today in the United States, and it's not an academic thing. It affects every principle, for example. Every principle is affected by this, especially the principles. This is one of the words in the English language that will bear no adjective of quality or degree. For example, there's no such thing as delegated autonomy. Think about it. And yet that word, that phrase is used around the country. Well, if it's delegated, obviously not autonomy. There's no such word as relative autonomy, no such concept, or partial autonomy. As a matter of fact, it actually rises to the point of absurdity. In the state of Texas, education code says that each local school has quasi-autonomy. I didn't know the new Latin, but there it is, quasi-autonomy, and nobody knows what that means. It's almost like we deliver, try to confuse and try to have it both ways. The old approach to education called site-based management, do you remember that? Originated in Edmonton, Alberta, Canada, back in the eighties, even went further to confuse it. And they said in the name of autonomy, that local school has three sacred prerogatives. They are in fact the primary decision-making unit with regard to curriculum, finances, and staffing. Well, that never happened anywhere on the planet. It never happened. And so I wound up with a lot of people who were trying to be educational leaders in their schools and their learning centers, not really understanding what their responsibilities are or the agency they have to bring that about. I don't mean to make this too complicated. You could teach a whole course on this subject. But the simple point I want to make is, if we were doing long-range planning, we would assess the impact of all those things on us, and then we'd respond in kind. And it's a very assertive position, and I think sometimes the reason people, this is Bill talking, it's my opinion, I probably shouldn't offer it, but sometimes I think people are a little bit reluctant to assume the state or the status of autonomy because along with that comes commensurate responsibility, commensurate accountability, if you will, for what that autonomy is used for. Serious business. I just told the class, the planning team yesterday, I saw an instance recently where a university president was given a very hot political issue. He had to decide, he had to make this decision. He put it off as long as he could, and about three months after having the original challenge, he finally called a press conference and got up to deliver his decision, and this is what he said behind the seal of the university. He stood behind the podium and said this, "I've studied this issue for three months, and this is my decision," and I'm quoting him verbatim, this is what he said, "I go where I'm pushed." I go where I'm pushed, denying, you with me, the autonomy that even his board had or that he had in making this decision. Yes, sir?
I was sure of your doubts.
Sir?
So, I guess I'm not following exactly what the autonomy discussion is very well, but it has to do with Independent School District 624. So I think some people would argue that it could have partial autonomy.
They do.
It's a matter of how you look at the word, right?
They do.
But maybe it's just we have the ability to make some choices over things that which we have some control.
You're exactly right.
Many things we do not.
Yes, sir.
So that's what we're doing, right?
Sure. Yes, sir.
Number two, who's this?
She's a wonderful student, member of the planning team.
Okay. I didn't remember who that is.
Actually, that's them. She's our board leader.
Yeah, I forgot her name. Sorry. Number three, to what degree, if any, I asked this question a couple of months ago, and there was an answer to that either. There was a strategic plan.
Yes, sir.
And to what degree is that looked at in this process, if any? Or is there any closure to that? If there was, I missed it.
That's amazing.
Oh, number four, it's kind of a dangerous proposition to do a strategic plan, right?
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, there's these people in this room and others who will participate somewhat randomly, except for the people in this room, and if you have a different group of people doing it, you might end up with a different strategic plan. Or in theory, will the correct strategic plan emerge, no matter who's involved in creating it?
You raise some interesting questions. These are graduate school questions.
Not the one of ours.
May I try to answer both those questions in the same little discussion here? They're truly wonderful questions, yes, sir. I'll deal with both of them, if you will. As a matter of fact, you've given me the entree to talk to you about another kind of planning, long-range planning, and I admit to you, sir, it's confused, it's unsettled, you with me? And there's a lot of tension there, I understand that. But all we try to do is to encourage our boards and our superintendents, is to take full advantage of whatever autonomy you think you have, to assert that, because you have to do that in order to look after your own, what's best for your students. Otherwise, I'm succumbing to an intractable universal monolith that's called a system of education. The second kind of planning that this is not is comprehensive planning. And we can deal with both those questions, but I probably have to go back here to the little whiteboard and talk about that. I'll do with your first question here, sir. And in just a couple of minutes, when we start talking about the process we're using here, I'll do with your second question, which is a really good question. The assumption underlying comprehensive planning, and by the way, this is almost a legal term, in fact, it's written into law in some states. State of New York is required, school districts are required to do comprehensive planning. And technically, they're required to do comprehensive strategic planning, which I think is an oxymoron, nevertheless, it's a very specific approach to planning. The assumption is that once we create some sort of artificial systems, especially intellectual systems, political systems, healthcare systems, that that system upon its creation is given granted eternal life. There's no expiration date in its charter. That is to say, it's intended, that it will live forever as it is. Comprehensive planning, therefore, takes that as a given, and in their planning, basically all they can do is to make refinements in that, modifications, improvements, sometimes continuous improvements. But basically, any change they make is a change within that system, a change within that system. They would never presume to make a change of system. It's an important distinction. And so the system is going to be essentially the same thing after planning as it was before planning. It just may be addressed differently, and the language may somehow be a little less precise, but nevertheless, it's the same system. Strategic planning sort of walks away from that idea very quickly because strategic planning assumes this. This is about one of three ways to look at it, but this is the simplest way. Strategic planning assumes that when a system is created, let's say it's born at zero, goes through infancy, adolescence, finally matures, appears some way. And all of you know this, the growth curve, you're all familiar with that. But it reaches a point of maturity, and how do you define maturity? The simplest way to look at it is to say maturity occurs when, or is reached, when there's an equilibrium between that and just one identity which is coming out, the so-called output is commensurate with the input. For lots of reasons, which we don't have time to talk about here, that cannot be maintained, it can't happen. The diagram I'm putting up here is about five thousand years old, and most major civilizations have had some version of this. The Maya, for example, had a diagram like this. Chinese even, they use the same idea with symbols. This is a Greek version. Hence, they would call this crisis. That's a Greek word, and it means gentle. And they would say, once you reach that point with this equilibrium, it's going to be out of kilter, you're running a serious risk of obsolescence. Obsolescence is defined as, I'm having to put more into it than I'm getting out of it. The system is obsolete. The system is an expedient, it's not built for the duration, it's not built for eternity, it's an expedient to serve a purpose. And when I'm having to put more into that system, for whatever reason, I'm getting out of it, then the system is obsolete. Therefore, without some sort of intervention, this is bound to happen. You see this all the time. You see it all the time. You just saw today, it's always our us, and now it's bankruptcy.
But they're going to stay open, they're not, you know, so late, meaningless announcement.
You're exactly right. Watch it. Okay. Watch this. Comprehensive planning says, "I would devote all my efforts to maintaining that home of stasis." And I'd build scaffolds under it, I'd do all kind of injections into it, all kind of support. I'd do my best to sustain that thing. Whole industries would grow up helping me support that, which is already obsolete. Because I have a vested interest in the system and not particularly interested in what that system was designed to produce. And most comprehensive planning is actually that. Strategic planning says, no, no, no. You have to realize that the only time living things reach home of stasis is when they're So am I going to try to sort of inject life into this corpse, stimulate it, hoping it will evolve? I don't think so. Strategic planning says, okay, let's do this. Other professions use this same concept. Talk to any psychotherapist, and they will say, "We actually use this in our practice." But it's very instructive to understand that they say there are two kinds of change. There's level one change, in which I'm changing, and I'm changing inside the system, but it's still the same system, but nowhere. Parting time, frustration, tension, which is the original. That's change in the system, and then there's level two change, they say, that creates a new identity, change of the system. And it's an interesting thing. I learned this from that profession. They say the only way you can tell you have actually experienced this is when you change the language, when you change your terminology. If I'm using the same vocabulary, thinking the same thing, acting the same thing. Well, see, that's a truth, but it's not the whole truth. Now to answer your questions, this is a truth. This is a truth. And if you see that, you'll say Billy's saying planning is cyclical. You develop a plan, you run it down to zero and start all over. No, 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 that's a truth, but not true. Strategic planning, if you really understand it, is more like a helix, you with me? And that's why, sir, we see strategic planning as a continuous process. In fact, we define it this way. Strategic planning is a means by which a community of people like you, a corporate team if you want to, continuously creates these artificial systems to serve a certain purpose. This is purely rationalism. This is imaginative, it's intuitive. And so what happens to these pre-existing plans, particularly a mature system like yours, where that plan has actually brought about truly strategic results, you with me? It's not a failed plan, it's a good plan, the one you have. It's in the back of the Vital Signs Notebook. Everybody on this planning team, 30 people, last two days, have had the current plan in front of them. The intent is to build on it and draw from it, you with me? And continue to create, to avoid this, and certainly to avoid this. So it's a continuous process, it is honored, sir, to film it. As a matter of fact, I would even say this to you. We had a tremendous session the last two days, I mean, it was really good. You'd be delighted to see how, what this planning team is thinking, what their aspirations are. You'd be very happy about that. We would not be here with that kind of happy circumstance and condition had it not been for this previous plan. It's your current plan has brought us to this point. Is that helpful?
Yeah, I wasn't... Yep, that's very helpful. I wasn't worried about the other plan. I just was wondering how they could.
Oh, it's a great point. I mean, it's a wonderful point you made, yeah. God, it's worth knowing. We need to know that, we need to understand that. You're exactly right. We do not abandon it, yes, sir.
Even in the helix... Well, let me ask this first, is your helix infinite? Otherwise, with the little model you've sketched, clearly you've reached the apex. And then what, do you cycle down the other side of the helix?
I don't know about that. I don't know, we use it just to illustrate the point of continuous development. And also because it's the basic life unit, you know? It's a living thing, constant versions. It may not be adequate, it may not be an appropriate metaphor, but that's the best we've got. Unless I go back and look at something called a chambered nautilus and see how that little shell continues to do that. I'd think about that.
Spider moves around in circles.
Yes, yes, sir, that's probably right, yeah.
Every now and then.
No, I suspect it's much more frequent than that.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to show you what we teach, what we practice as a strategic planning process. And I'll come back up there and sort of talk you through it just briefly, see if you have any questions. By the way, any questions so far?
I think it's on there, I see that light on there. Thank you. Take a minute.
Just hit the green button right there, yeah, right there.
It's on, it's on, it's on. It's just... And it's on.
Is that on here? Well, why don't you shut it off, turn it back on?
There you go. No, that's turned it off.
I see a green light now.
Press any other button.
I don't see a green light anymore.
Where's Mark?
He went home.
It's muted on the video. Yeah. I think this room wants to. Why don't you just turn it off? I'm sure Dr. Cook has much more of something he can share while we solve this problem.
Who should we inform?
That you're...
That, yeah, that they're... This is... You're asking me to...
I'll just... Have they used them?
Yeah. Here you go. Here you go. I'll look, I'll look. I'll look. Give it a little time.
Dr. Cook, do you want your water? Can I bring this over to you?
Uh, just a minute, thank you. Yes, sir.
Thanks for getting that for me, yeah.
From Texas, are you from, sir?
I'm not from Texas.
Oh, you're from Texas. Well, I thought, sure, I was a Texas girl, I was here.
Spent a lot of time there, but I'm not from there. Maybe that's a problem, spend too much time. I can talk you through this without division. Because you all have vivid imaginations. Can we do this? It's obvious I should have planned ahead and checked out...
Here we go.
Oh. It's kind of all or nothing. It's all or nothing.
All or nothing.
Yes. We can read it.
Can you read it? Yeah.
Yes, no.
We can email you this, or we can give you a hard copy of it, board members, if you like. Notice this says, Thinking, Planning, and Action. This is a full scheme of what we do. And it is constituted of a process and a discipline. The big numbers, the big Arabic numbers, are the process. That is how we go about developing a plan and taking it into action. This is a discipline that would you see asterisks by? Believe, mission parameters, objective strategies, and action plans. You'll notice the asterisks by each of these, and that signifies two things. These are developed by agreement. We never vote. So we never have winners and losers. We never have a minority report. Then we go beyond consensus. We'll not settle for consensus. Because we've observed that consensus simply means we voted and the losers are friendly. We'll not make trouble. When your plan is published, it will be published with these cardinal features, believe, mission parameters, objective strategies, and action plans. These formative features are built into the process of deciding these things. These are not done by agreement. Matter of fact, we spent all day today right here. We spent yesterday up here. We'll go back to there tomorrow. Spent all day in these internal analyses. We call them formative features. Now, let's go back to the top and talk about how this plays out. Stop any time, and I don't know how much time I have. I told you I could talk about this for a long, long time. How about if I try to finish in 30 minutes, is that all right? Is that pushing it?
That would be wonderful.
Is that pushing it?
No, that would be fine, thank you.
The first block up there, step number one is strategic thinking. We realize that strategic planning requires three or four things if it's going to be authentic. You must have a strategic system, we just talked about that, autonomy. It must deal with strategic issues and must make strategic decisions. And then you hope it takes strategic action. We did not include that in our process here. We had tentatively scheduled it, and then we ran into a time problem, you with me? Scheduling problem, individual scheduling, so we've not done that yet. However, that can occur at any point in this whole process, even when we take it down to the sites. Strategic thinking is always good to infuse into the process. Step number two, we did some pretty serious commitment in preparation for this. We actually trained, what was it, six internal facilitators? At least six people went through the internal facilitation program. And we have some of those with us here tonight, don't we? We have Ash and, yes, in good shape, right, yeah. As a matter of fact, Ash is serving as our internal facilitator, orchestrating all this, making sure everything is in place, keeping me in line, making sure I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing. The superintendent conducted some awareness sessions around the district, yes, telling people what we're going to do. Ash developed an interim... I mean, yeah, Ash developed this information base. Ash developed an information base, called Vital Signs Notebook, just what you said, sir, all the things around this. We have not done this. And I told the superintendent and the facilitators, that's strictly the prerogative of the board, and at the request of the board, is called exploration of system capacity design. It's strictly designed for about a two or three or four-hour session with the board, if they wish that. And the reason for that is, if a strategic plan is really strategic, it's going to have an impact on the organization, and they ought to know this upfront. The superintendent put together a strategic planning team, and you see the four characteristics there? Manageability, we maxed it at 30. Ideal number's 25, but we maxed it at 30. Inclusivity, making sure that we have people on that team from throughout the educational system, teachers, you with me, classified people. We had two board members scheduled, but one was out of town with the board administrators. But most important was this microcosm. We really tried to put together a planning team. And listen carefully to this word, that reflected, did not represent, but reflected all the values and perspectives of our diverse communities. And I said to your superintendent, if anybody can look at that planning team and not see themselves reflected back, we have difficulty, we have some trouble. I really believe that the team we had for the last couple of days met that criterion. But I'm no final judge of that. But I felt as if it were, based on the discussions that we were having. And the last is goodwill, and that simply means, and we actually did this, that every one of these team members is willing to put aside any special interest, any kind of personal interest, not taking upon themselves to represent anybody or any group, and make all decisions based strictly on the best interest of the student. That's the only way we can reach agreement, is by operating at the highest common denominator, best interest of the student. And by the way, your team has been faithful to that. Not once have we heard anybody express any personal interest. Not once has anybody attempted to represent any group or a particular philosophy. No, they were all zeroed in directly on what's best for the students. Strong group of people. This is our first planning session. This is a two-and-a-half-day session. We completed two days. And we have developed beliefs. I think we have a mission. They don't know it, but they've already written parameters. And tomorrow, we work on objectives and strategies. We have accomplished internal analysis, external analysis, competition, and probably tomorrow, we'll spend some time talking about critical issues. When we leave that session tomorrow, we will leave with these things and with strategies. Now, sir, let me talk to you about, I think, the other thing, about whether or not, yes, sir.
Dr. Cook, I'm interested with, in the realm of school districts, what do you consider competition? Retaining, attracting students from other districts, or external factors, funding, sorts of things?
I'll give you our definition of competition. A competitor is any group or any entity that is offering the same goods, products, and services to the same clientele. Your competitors, not the US Army or the Marine Corps, your competitors be other similar districts. And we had a really good discussion about that today, didn't we, Tim? You guys dealt with competition. You just mentioned that briefly, too, as we talked about it.
Well, yeah, so when we looked at, when we looked at competition that we face as a school district, and we could chose, chosen any particular competitive environment, we selected a neighboring school district and looked at... So what advantages do they have in that competition, if it were? Or what advantages do we have? And we looked at Maramieide Public Schools, right? And we identified some things that they have going for them. They have a wealthier tax base, they have newer facilities, they have a positive reputation, excellent reputation, they have great test scores. We had some other things. We're going to go down there. Looked at some of our advantages. We have a stronger sense of diversity. We have stronger program offerings, or greater, more program offerings. We have growing enrollment. We have strong community partnerships. Is there something we think that we have won for us that they don't necessarily have in such a strong sense in Maramieide, so...
You know, sir...
Make your point, or is that it?
That's good. You know that competition is a market, you with me? And in a choice state, you'll want us to look at it that way. Because I know you've got other educational entities marketing against you. And that's why we look at it. Mostly in that we look at our advantages against theirs, their advantages against us. And then we try to identify their points of vulnerability. We don't do anything about it here, you with me? We just analyze. Anything we do about it is going to come in the strategy and in the action plan. You're good?
Yeah.
There's two things I think you want to know as board members. If I were a board member, I'd want to know this, to try to answer this question, about whether or not we get the same thing with a different group. You don't have to be the judge of it, but I'll tell you. I'll be trying to make sure that we closely approximate, no matter who's in the group, as long as that group is constituted that way. The first thing we do in planning, the first thing we did yesterday, we spent most of the day yesterday revealing to each other our fundamental core beliefs. Not institutional beliefs, not creed, not credos, but what we believe as human beings living in this, in this place. And we looked at it like this, we said, okay, here's our jurisdiction geographically, it's territorial. But within that, there are all kinds of fully formed value systems. I know that because I got 50 languages spoken at home, so I've got maybe that many cultures on the ground at the same time. Well, what we try to do is to see whether or not we have true community. Well, what we try to do is to see whether or not we have true community. And we define community as a place metaphorically where I see myself reflected back. So in order to get at that, we try to find this common core of values that holds us all together. And by the way, folks, we've worked with about fourteen hundred and fifty clients around the world and we've never failed to find that. It's amazing, we've always gotten it. That's what you're going to see expressed in your belief statements. What do we have, twelve? Now, it's an interesting speculation. Suppose, maybe we should try this sometime. Suppose I set that thirty people, that thirty person planning team aside, create another one that approximates it or duplicates it, would I get the same thing? I don't know. I would think so. I really believe we would if we have the same kind of reflection, you with me, of the people there, with the same kind of perspective, the same kind of value system. I think we would. There might be some variation in language, but I think essentially it would be the same statement. Because why? Because it's a, a real life reflection of who we are, that's what the beliefs are. And by the way, when you see these beliefs, you're going to see they're not platitudes. They're full sentences. They're declarations. Such as... Do you remember one? Give us a strong one. Such as?
We believe that every, every student deserves love.
Yeah, how about that? That was the last one, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Give me another one, Tim?
Respect of diversity is strength.
Yes. These are not platitudes, these are not bumper stickers.
We are stewards of the earth.
Fundamental deep and abiding convictions, okay.
We believe communities, communities with shared goals have unlimited potential.
And you can't feel the full effect of it when you're an individual, have to see all fourteen of them written together. This, this statement of belief serves two purposes. First of all, becomes a plumb line that's going to make sure we have integrity in our plan, we never violate them. And since our moral imperative has become the spiritual energy that drives the plan. Can you imagine developing a plan without any commitment to values or beliefs at all? It'd be a dead document, have no life. Might as well import one, put your name on it, give it to everybody. We spent about five hours working on that. And then the next thing I think you might want to understand, might want to be apprised of is this, the mission statement, I think, finally was put in almost final form tonight, it'll be in final form tomorrow morning. The mission statement is crafted very similar to the one you have in your existing plan. If you look at your existing plan, that mission you have, I mean, our associate did it, you got three parts. You got the identity to which we aspire, you have the purpose, why we exist, and you have the means, critical attributes. And it's a very powerful statement. But board, I think what you might want to be interested in is this. This is not an academic document. That mission statement with its attendant parameters or policies has got to grapple with this question and resolve it. Otherwise, we are without any kind of focus at all. And we challenged the planning team and I think they've pretty come to grip, pretty much come to grips with this. You've got to put yourself into one of these quadrants, any organization on the planet, no care what it is, even a church has to put itself in one of these quadrants. Real simple. Many things to many clients. You see the rest of them. We intend to be many things to many clients, few things to few clients, many things to few clients or few things to many clients. And so that's what you're going to see coming out of this mission statement. And they've actually done that with the three parts. The next thing up there is parameters. These are limitations we place on ourselves and you've got some of these already in the existing plan. So this is not new to you. The ones we have coming out of this session are going to be stronger and a bit tighter. And then you have objectives. Your current plan has admirable objectives, but the objectives coming out of this planning session, I think will be much more powerful because you're probably going to have a stronger mission statement than you had in the past. And then we write strategies. And you're familiar with that. I think right now you have six strategies, right? You had that in your pre-existing plan, six strategies. Each of those strategies will be given to an action team after a period of communication. Wayne and others will make presentations of this draft plan to our various groups, communication plan. We put together action teams, you've done this before, create strategy, build an action team. Did I do that?
I got you.
Undo it. All right, thank you. Sorry about that. Always forget that. Those action teams can actually be larger than the planning team. Last time you had eight, and you had six action teams, you had six strategies. Each of those teams will have a leader appointed by your superintendent. We will train those action team leaders. If by that time you have adopted the software, we will actually use that software in training with it. And we'll spend about three months developing action plans. You, you know this, each of those strategies will be turned into any number of action plans. And the action plans will take the form of either programs, projects or prototypes. Each of those action plans will have a cost benefit analysis attached to it, no blue sky. Sometime, probably in February, I don't know, is it February, we'll have a second planning The planning team will come back together, probably for about a day and a half. The action team leaders present their plans to this planning team. And based on some pretty rigid criteria, the planning team will select out those action plans they think will best realize the strategies. Then we'll put together an implementation schedule, probably phasing the plans in over three to five years, we don't try to accomplish everything at one time. Along with that, there'll be a credible resource allocation plan showing how this can actually be taken into, into reality, it can be made a reality. And that can guide, can actually become the stimulus for our whole planning, for the whole budget. At that point, superintendent will bring it to the board for approval. Any approval before that would be premature because we do not have a complete plan. So we don't know what we're approving. Two things here real quickly. We talked about strategic action, this is your strategic action. First thing we do is this, we recommend that we work with all the administrators to rethink their current job descriptions because you want to organize to your plan, not plan to your organization. And we will work with them to develop what we call mutual commitments and expectations. We had a very interesting discussion today in the planning session about evaluation. And one of our teachers made a distinction between formative and summative evaluation. And one of our community members said, what is that? Okay. This will clarify that because mutual commitment and expectations is never summative, it's always formative, always developing, always growing, you with me? So I don't need to stop and give somebody a grade for how well they're doing. It's a commitment of the school district to make sure that that person, just like the district, is constantly emerging, constantly growing. And then site planning, you're doing this already, you have your site plans, we call it action cluster planning. Because this may be applied not just to a building, to a building. We have a lot of special ed departments, for example, that are developing their own plan. I have food service departments that are developing their own plan according to the protocol of the site plans. Then, simply because, we go back to the helix of whatever it is. You want to have periodic updates, you with me? Just to make sure the plan is current. The last thing you want is for the action to get ahead of the plan. So we try to keep the plan ahead of the action with the annual updates. Well, I've told you more than I know about this subject, but I still would ask you if you have any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Cook?
Yes, sir.
I'm just noticing, I mean, we're just started the process, but there'll be some amount of like focus or space on the website on this because we have old strategic stuff on websites and that's coming. Just wondering, you know, so there's thirty people on the team.
Yes, sir.
And you mentioned, you can't imagine anyone not seeing themselves reflected in that group or not knowing who they are, except for some. Will we be successful in like getting actual diversity in ethnicity, you know, race?
You'll have to have somebody...
Social, economic wise, actual diversity that way or just people who probably will speak up on the other end?
Wayne, you need to answer that question, I can't do it.
I think we achieved a good mix. So we spent a fair amount of time in the academy, in the games and so, I don't, I feel pretty good about the group, you know, outside of that. There are, we counted, we counted that, you know, people collar on the team, we maybe didn't think, maybe I didn't think about the strategic dynamic as much as I could have as a group, I think there's, I think it's diverse, things and assumptions, I think it's, I think we're okay there.
A lot of diverse thought, right?
Diverse thought, we have a political spectrum covered.
Well covered.
Yeah.
There's a story there.
There's a couple stories there.
There's big discussions and...
So the community members were kind of recruited and with the idea of ensuring more diversity.
Yeah. I mean, I think it was pretty, it's pretty representative, you got parents, a parent, I don't know if it's one-on-one, I don't know. Sure, parents, community, community members.
Students.
Local government.
Like, right there.
There's some community reps.
Yeah.
There were business reps.
Morse.
Morse was on there. Joe.
Joe Runley.
And there were the different ages, I mean, there were senior citizens.
Young, middle, three students.
And it's, there are people I didn't know, but as they talked and talked about what other things they were involved in, I mean, it was a broad spectrum of experiences of other organizations they're involved in and represent sites, their own personal experiences.
People who've been in the district for a really long time, large, or people who've been in the district for a relatively short period of time.
Yeah.
A parent that moved in like three, four years ago.
People like John Anderson, we just refer to as artifacts.
No, I heard the term born and raised.
Born and raised.
Born and raised.
That's his nickname, born and raised.
Kind of like you guys.
Becky Batters is another born and raised.
Mitch, are you on the verbal screen?
I am.
Oh, excellent.
And then, another question. Could, could a strategic objective or strategy, I mean, just potentially be, build a new high school? I mean, is that, could that be something or combined to, I'm just wondering because there's also a future facility study and I'm wondering if this could, you know, guess, work together with that or affect that or maybe result in no need for that potentially?
Here again, that's a good question and the planning teams are going to have to make that decision. Building a high school would probably be an action plan and a facility strategy. Strategies are huge. So the strategy would be about providing facilities, you with me? New high school could be an action plan. Use of technology might be a facilities plan, you with me?
Or a strategy could be to do a review, a review of secondary buildings that might imply that, look at what our high schools is going to look like.
It's a matter of proportion. The action plan would talk about programs and projects, you with me, prototypes. The strategies are big because strategies are about the system, they're about the whole system, trying to move the system forward. And so they need to be written really big, otherwise my action plans are just going to turn out to be sort of very small in their scope.
Yeah, it just kind of dawned on me that, that, you know, that is a big one that everybody knows, right? What are we going to do about the high schools? So I would think a number of people in the community would want to address that in the strategic planning or there are things that are, you know, kind of off limits. But then if that's off limits, then that affects your strategic planning, right? If you're going to have a whole different high school, decision in two or three years, can you...
I think it hasn't been off limits, it's been just, our conversation has been bigger than facilities. Facilities will likely come out of that, right? But our conversation has really been about where do we want to be? What will we, what's our highest aspiration? Now, our next steps would be how are we going to get there, right? But until you know where you want to be, it would be a mistake for us to be talking about how are we going to get somewhere when we're not sure where we want to be. And facilities should be where we want to be, we're bigger than that. Yeah, so...
But then what, that where we want to be is, is an objective or something, but would, I mean, and I don't want to belabor this, but would building, having a one, building high school be an action step? I don't know, I'm just saying potentially, I can imagine this conversation...
Maybe even emerge from a strategy of maybe something to do with transitions.
Right.
And then that would cause us to think about the number of transitions that students are making during their academic career. And then, and then that might lead into that discussion.
But to answer your question, sir, is there's a place for that, we just don't know exactly where it's going to be, where it would be, but there would definitely be a place for that.
And I can, you know, not every single presentation we do, but darn near every single presentation that we've been doing in the ivory, that comes up.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's something people want to talk about.
I think we've talked about it a lot the last two days.
Yeah. It's out there, we're talking about it. We don't shy away from it. We talk about ensuring that there will be a process that will finally, you know, bring that out into the open, like discussion, remember wants to be involved in it.
Well, any other questions?
Well, any other questions for Dr. Cook? Well, Dr. Cook, thank you for spending the time with us, thank you for laying out the process in kind of like a graduate studies format, I really appreciate this.
He actually, he actually teaches a graduate course, I guess you could tell.
Very good, yes.
But I wanna thank you, it's a true honor to work with this district. I'm sure you have placed a lot of confidence in us, and we'll do our best to live up to that trust. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'd like to give a special thank you to the people in this room who've been involved so heavily in the process today, Mr. Wall, Mr. Paul, Mr. Cooper, Dr. Kazma, Chad, and his new master, who've devoted an extraordinary amount of time. Oh, and Ashley. Very good. Well, the majority of the people in this room, so that's a, that's a huge time commitment, but we really appreciate all working on this. All right, well, we look forward to updates, and seeing nothing more this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
All right, I'll second that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody, see what our work-study meeting Monday evening.